Good day. I'm Janet Wallace, moderator of the Town of Kingston, and this is the moderator's town meeting preview. Town meeting will be held on May 5th, 2018 at 9:00 at the Kingston Intermediate School. We have 44 articles on the warrant, and additional warrant dates, I mean additional town meeting dates are set for May 10th and May 17th, 7:00 PM also at Kingston Intermediate School. With me today is Mary McKinnon, Chairman of the Finance Committee. Thank you for coming and doing this with me.
My pleasure.
You're always a delight and obviously have more knowledge on the Kingston finances than anyone. All right, so we start with Article 1, and those are just our filing of our town reports from all the town offices, boards, and committees, and as you know, they're in the annual town report that will be available at town meeting. Article 2 is an annual article. This for this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2018. It's unused interdepartmental transfer. So we transfer, they're seeking to transfer unused funds from one department to another, and the total this year is $410,617.58. This year, $209,541.58 will come from prior annual town meeting articles that were unspent, $137,000 from the general fund budget, and again, those are unspent, right?
They are.
Okay. And then we have $64,076 from free cash.
Correct.
So that's the one that is the additional. So from this, I won't go from where the money's coming from, I'm just going to indicate to you where the money's going. So the first amount is selectmen's wage and personnel, and that's $5,683.8, and that's the wage and personnel increases in the selectmen's office. Selectmen contract salaries, this one is $83,790.47, and this particular one is the Board of Selectmen contract with the town administrator, Bob Fennessy, that the Board of Selectmen entered into. Then we have the selectman overtime is $217.84. I laughed when I saw that. I'm likely, they're very much underpaid, but anyhow.
Well, you know what that's typically for is the time, the additional time that's spent putting together the annual town report.
Oh, okay, all right. And then we have, the next section is planning, wage, and personnel. So when you're looking at this in the warrant, remember there's two sections. So there's a from and a to, and then there's a from and a to. So with this is planning, wage, and personnel is $2,745.19. Again, that's wage and personnel increases. We have legal services, an additional sum of $82,000. Fire department training is $16,000, and then our typical and always snow and ice expenses, this year was $198,300. So that's always what's above, that's not put in their budget.
Correct.
So this isn't, obviously you have a lot of stuff.
Their budget is always deliberately underfunded because it's something that you can't really anticipate, but it's the one expense that legally you're allowed to deficit spend, and we tend to cover it using free cash, so this is an annual event for us.
Right. Then there's insurance, which is $11,356, and I know you'll cover that in the budget because that's another issue, that's the same insurance, is that?
This one is employee benefits, Department 945.
Okay. And that's the one you talked about, which is one of the big increases?
Yep, it's one of the increases, yep, we'll get there.
And there's IT GIS mapping for $10,525, and that's for aerial mapping. It's a multi-town contract, and that's to benefit the planning board and assessors, and it's to do an aerial map, and that, all of those departments will be benefiting from that update.
To help, yeah, to help update our GIS system. It's used by conservation.
Conservation, that was the other one that I had.
Exactly, exactly.
And the Finance Committee is favorable 500 on that article. Now we're on Article 3, is our budget article. I want everybody to know it is posted online, but there will be a separate document from the warrant and booklets that will be the Town of Kingston, that's our Finance Committee, all of the normal budget stuff are not in the booklet this year, and they're not posted on the warrant. So this is going to be, and have you posted that yet, or is that?
So this booklet did not make it to the warrant in time. We still had some last-minute details to finish. However, this booklet is almost done, and I'm hoping it'll be posted to the town website within about 24 hours.
Okay, great.
So once it's ready, we'll make sure that the townspeople know that it's out there and available for them to take a look at.
And where is it going to be posted on?
So it will be posted on the Finance Committee page, and then we'll ask the town clerk to also post it on the homepage so that people can find it easily.
Great. So this year, our budget is $47,455,386, is a new number?
That's for the departmental expenses, that's not the overall budget, but go ahead, sorry. I'll explain.
Oh, okay. So with that, I just want to lay out that the numbers that I have is $46,779,321 will be raised and appropriated. Then we have the sum of $326,391 will be transferred from the water enterprise revenue. The sum of $278,472 will be transferred from the wastewater enterprise revenue, and the sum of $71,202 will be transferred from the septic loan fund balance. So I know that Finance Committee obviously has a 500, it's their budget, so it would be odd if they didn't, but I want Mary McKinnon now to give us a little bit of a budget update because you had given me a summary, but I think it's better if it comes from you.
Absolutely. So the overall budget for FY19 that's going to be presented is $47,845,000 and some change. So it's a $47.8 million budget. It is up $1.9 million over the prior year's budget of $45.9 million. It's a significant increase, $2 million is certainly significant. That represents a 4.2% increase in our overall budget. There are many changes that folks will see in the budget book, but there's essentially three primary drivers behind that $1.9 million increase. So let me just take a minute to go through those if I could. So the, and we'll do it sort of in order of magnitude. The first major increase to the budget is $1.3 million for our school system, and that includes both Silver Lake as well as the local schools, KES and KIS. There were some significant increases across both of those budgets, and the sum total is $1.3 million. To break it down a little bit further, the increase for Kingston's assessment for Silver Lake is $477,000, and the increase in our KES/KIS budget is about $860,000. What happened is the Silver Lake budget, the Silver Lake's overall budget to operate the entire entity went up about 2.6% in an overall increase, and the Finance Committee felt that that was a reasonable increase to educate the students at the middle school and the high school. The impact to our assessment was really driven by the increase in our calculated minimum contribution. So what happens is, the state comes to every community and says, based on your school budget, here is the minimum amount that you need to contribute to fund that school budget, and then you have the ability of funding over and above that, and we have traditionally funded over and above that. Our minimum contribution this year increased by over $300,000. So we knew that our increase for Silver Lake was going to be at least $300,000 to begin with. Where we ended up after working with the school committee, and they did a very good job, is a $477,000 increase. That gave them the ability to add some new programs and things into their budget for the coming year. When it came to KES/KIS, there were, again, $860,000 worth of increases. $750,000 of that came directly from special ed, and the remaining $110,000, $111,000 is applied to what we call the general or regular day programs. Now, what happened is that the special ed budget, as we know, has been progressively increasing, and the impact is really being felt across all of our town services as the increase in the demands on special ed are really putting some pressure on our ability to grow town government services. This particular budget includes the, a new position for the school department that they felt very strongly about, they needed to have an additional behaviorist added to their budget, and a couple of other things. They're also, in this budget, have the ability of adding some revolving programs because the focus for special ed for them is to try to bring more students back into the district and offer programs in our district. It is very, very-
And by that, you mean not sending them out to be educated away from our district, which is a lot of funding.
Exactly.
That's expensive, and so you're getting them back into the school system, our school system.
Exactly. So if we have the ability of running those programs internally, then we're not paying tuition to send these students who have-
And transportation.
Well, and so to that point, you know, if we're spending, say, $2.4 million in tuition for students to attend out-of-district programs, we're also spending, in addition to that, about $690,000 to transport them to those programs. So it's very, very significant, and so the more that we're able to bring in-house and offer in-house, the more that we're going to be able to, in the future, bring those costs down. The other thing about some of the programs that the school committee and the superintendent and the director of special ed are really trying to accomplish is, not only would we bring those programs in-house and offer them for our Kingston students, but we would then have the ability of tuitioning in children from another community that would more than cover the per pupil cost of running those programs. So we worked with the superintendent, school committee, and director of special ed to really vet this out. It was, we had many, many meetings, hours and hours and hours of conversations, really looking at this from a lot of different angles. We all worked very, very hard to try to bring those costs down, and it's not an easy feat. It's a significant cost, and I anticipate that some folks are going to have some questions about it on town meeting floor, but that's one of the biggest impacts that we're going to see in the budget for this year.
And I know that our Finance Committees, Plimpton and Halifax's Finance Committee have been meeting with the school committee, and I know that you've also engaged with state in regard to, because one of the concerns that we've had, and we've raised this at multiple town meetings, is our special ed is going up. We're obligated to educate all students, so we're obligated on that special ed, but I know that this is even being addressed at the State House in regard to how do we address it. So it sounds like you guys are stepping in now, and this is somewhat, almost remedial in the sense of trying to get and trying to solve something that's-
I mean, there are definitely some challenges, you know, there's only so much that we can do here at the local level because our responsibility is to provide a free and appropriate education, public education to all students. It's our obligation, and therefore, regardless of, you know, the costs, we do the best we can to minimize those costs, but it's our responsibility to do that. The state offers some reimbursement programs specifically when it comes to special education. The problem is that when those programs were initially developed many years ago, they were promised a certain reimbursement rate. So for example, the Circuit Breaker program, which reimburses extraordinary expenses for special ed. When that program was developed, the state had said to all of the communities, we will reimburse you 75% of those eligible costs. Well, for the past several years, that reimbursement rate has been around 60%, so it's definitely underfunded. I will say that the legislature worked for this year in the FY18 budget to bring that reimbursement rate up to 71%. So for our extraordinary expenses that we incur this year, our next year's reimbursement will be a little higher, but it remains to be seen what's going to happen in future years as pressure on the state budget continues. The other thing is regional transportation. When that program was developed, it was supposed to be fully funded by the state, and it's not even close. It's probably around 55% to 56% funded. So we spend a lot of money for public education services and programs, and we were expecting, as all communities do, having more of a reimbursement impact from the state, and we're just not seeing it. So we absolutely need to have better, stronger communication with our representatives and senators to make sure that they're doing everything that they possibly can to get those dollars for public education back into local communities like Kingston and all other surrounding communities.
Great. Now, you had mentioned two other areas of increases.
Absolutely. So there's some increases, and there's also some reductions. So let's talk about a couple of others. In addition to the school, there's also an impact within our personal services lines. So it's our labor costs for all of the services that we provide here in Town Hall. There have been some contracts that have been negotiated, and the impacts of those are in the FY19 budget, and based on the analysis of the personal services lines, it's falling approximately $300,000 impact for those wage increases. The third big issue is, as we hear every year, employee benefits. Although, while we're seeing an increase in employee benefits, it is not as bad as we had originally anticipated. When, we offer our benefits through the Mayflower Health Group, which is here in Plymouth County, and when we first started the budget process, we were being told to plan for a 10% to 12% increase on the premiums. Through working with the advisory committee and working very closely with our treasurer, who does a great job at really trying to hone in on a finite number for our budget, we actually ended up with rate increases from Mayflower between 4.5% to 7% across all of the, across all of the products that they offer, and our impact was lower than that in terms of our budget. So what we're seeing is, there's about $160,000 increase in health insurance, and there's about $100,000 increase in our pension assessment. And we've got to remember, when it comes to the pension assessment, you know, we're in a period where we're trying to catch, like all communities, catching up with our unfunded liability, but as our wages grow, our pension assessments grow as well because we need to, it's a percentage of gross wages, and so as we see growth in our personal services lines, there's a corresponding impact in our employee benefits lines. So those were the three big drivers. There's also some other small ones that folks are going to see in their budget book. We increased, or we're recommending increasing, the snow and ice budget by about $40,000. Just starting to ratchet it up a little bit in a very moderated fashion in order to start to align a little bit more closely with our extraordinary expenses that we have here in the Town of Kingston. The recycling costs over at the transfer station, there's been a big change across the recycling industry, if you will, and it costs us more money to dispose of items. So there's a $34,000 increase in that particular line item. There's also increases in training for the fire department to take some more advanced training at simulation labs like they did last year. There's also $15,000 that we're recommending putting into the recreation department's budget to maintain the ball fields. If folks remember, a couple of years ago, the recreation department came and said that the ball fields over at the Opachinsky complex were in tough shape. We allocated for a couple of years $25,000 of free cash at their recommendation in order to bring those fields up to playable condition. They are now there, the fields are looking gorgeous, and they've just started opening for use this year. So that was a pilot program, it was agreed to be a pilot program in order to help bring those back to a playable fashion, and that that number would then be looked at again, and which is what we've done this year, and we've added an additional $15,000 to the recreation department.
So going from repair to now just maintenance.
Maintenance, exactly. We're also seeing an increase of about $20,000 in our electric bills, and a couple of other places, there's some other moderate increases. There are some savings, and you'll also see some of those in there, not nearly as significant as the numbers we just talked about, but because we've had some staff turnover and some attrition, we have some cost savings in some of the departments, like the planning department, the accounting department, and the conservation department. So the net total, again, is a $1.9 million increase in the town's budget, which represents a 4.2% increase.
Thank you, Mary.
Absolutely.
Very comprehensive. Moving on to Article 4, we have the annual water department budget. This is $1,916,034 to be appropriated to operate the basic water department enterprise fund, and Finance Committee has favorable 500. Article 5 is the annual article for the capital projects for the water department, and that's $506,000 this year, and that will be from surplus revenues for repairs, and the two repairs are tank painting at $300,000 and stabilize the Millgate pump station at $206,000. And I'm sure if there's any questions, Water Department will be there to answer those. There's also $300,000 from the water department enterprise free cash to the water department stabilization account, which again is their savings account, right, to stop funding? So those are in place under Article 5.
Well, with that, the way that article reads, there's actually a typo in there.
Okay.
So let's clean that up. You know, it's a good thing we do these previews. That 506 should say 206. 206 is coming from surplus revenue, and 300's coming from their stabilization.
Okay, I will get that changed.
So we will get that corrected.
So it's not an additional 300, because it's looking like it says $300,000 from free cash to put into the water department stabilization fund. So that's why I was looking at the 506 for the 300 and the 206.
I think we need to go back and look at this article a little bit more closely, but it is their capital projects program for two repairs that they're looking for, but the funding sources seem to have a little bit of conflict, so we'll go back and look at that.
All right. We'll review Article 5 for more clarification, but that has Finance Committee favorable 600. Article 6 is the annual article for the sewer department budget, and the sewer department budget this year is $3,390,379, and that is coming $1,012,596 from the wastewater enterprise revenue, $100,000 to come from the wastewater surplus revenue, $915,311 to come from the sewer betterments, $1,128,927 from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, and lastly, $233,545 from the tax levy. So that is our sewer department budget, and that is Finance Committee favorable 500. Article 7 is the annual article for the capital projects for the sewer department, and this is for $188,914.27 from surplus revenue to upgrade equipment and materials to meet their permitting, permit renewal through the state. So this is to bring them up to par. This is Finance Committee has done favorable 500. Article 8 is our annual Kingston wind turbine article, and this is the Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund. This is basically, just to remind everybody, this is energy generated by the KWI turbine on the cap landfill, and it's then sold to Eversource, Eversource then funds it back to Kingston, and Kingston pays the vendor. So it's just one big circle, and this is set with a $500,000 cap. It is literally the cap, just because all of these have typically come in well under the $500,000. So that's a cap, it doesn't really have almost any value, but it's saying that that's the cap that can go into this fund. Finance Committee has recommended favorable action 600. Moving on to Article 9, this is our annual article for our elected officers. It is to set the salaries, and I'm going to read them. It's moderator 100, chairman board of selectmen 1,000, other selectmen each 800, chairman board of health 1,000, other health board members each 800, chairman board of assessors 1,000, other board of assessors each is 800, chairman of the water commission is 1,000, other water commissioners each is 800, other planning board members each, I'm sorry, chairman of the planning board is 1,000, other planning board members each is 800, chairman of the sewer commission is 1,000, and other sewer commissioners each is 800. Those have not changed.
Correct.
So I did not see any changes in those, but I wanted to make sure we read them. The collectors is, the collector's salary will be $70,766. The treasurer will be $70,766 as well, and the town clerk will be $68,208. So this article is also appropriating the sum of $6,109 as the increase to the collector, treasurer, and town clerk's salaries.
Correct.
Finance Committee has recommended favorable 420. Article 10 is the annual wage and personnel article. We, I just want to make everybody aware that we do not have numbers under this article. It's not posted yet, I haven't received them as of yet. Have you received them?
We have, no.
Okay. So that article, so we need to obviously get the numbers and the cost under this article, so I can't give you much more information, but I will tell you, wage and personnel did a lot of work this year, did a lot of reclassification. So I'm going to draw your attention to the posted warrant. If you see Schedule A, and these are all at the very end of the posted warrant, if you see Schedule A, that sets the rate per position, and Schedule B-1 sets the hourly rate for hourly employees. Schedule B-2 sets the rate for salary employees, and so if you compare those to last year's schedules is where you'll see the changes and the upgrades and the increases that were put into play. Then you go to Schedule C, 1 to 3, which sets first what positions in town are under what hourly ranges, and then what positions in town are under salary. So those are all there, so you can do them, but you kind of have to go back and forth between the schedules and all of that, but if you compare last year's to this year's, it will identify the increases in positions that they did. This will be obviously spoken about at town meeting. Finance Committee did unfavorable 041. So Mary, can you please tell us why the Finance Committee did unfavorable action on Article 10?
Well, first and foremost, we didn't have any final numbers, so it's very difficult to be able to make a full justification on the impact. We're waiting on some of those, I know the schedules are in progress, we've spoken with them a couple of times. But there's also a concern about the way that folks are set on compensation schedules in terms of having an automatic annual step increase as well as a COLA increase. So as people start to work for the town, every year on an anniversary date, they're automatically moved up a step, and there's an increase from one step to another. On top of that, they, the table gets adjusted with a cost of living increase. So on an annual basis, those increases could be upwards of 7%, 8%, because there's typically about a 3% to 5% increase between the steps, and then if you add a 2% or 3% COLA on top of that. And the Finance Committee felt as though those compensation methods are not fiscally responsible in terms of having both of those increases applied to a position. One of the recommendations was, as people start to move from step to step, and they're seeing a 3% to 5% increase in the step, that's fantastic. When they would get to the last step, then they would be, you know, they can't go any further, then a COLA could apply to the steps at that point. But the combination of both is part of what's putting a lot of pressure on our budget and the increases that we're seeing in personal services.
Okay, thank you, that was very-
Sure.
-comprehensive. So that's Article 10 regarding annual wage and personnel article. Article 11 is the Elizabeth Sampson Fund, as you all remember or may not know. Elizabeth Sampson passed away and left a fund for the Town of Kingston to expand and, to expend on issues of education and for municipal benefits in the town. So this year, and it's voted by the moderator, the treasurer, and the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. This year, we voted and appointed, or requested that Christmas luminaries would be 2,500, waterfront festival for police and EMT would be 2,000, national night out would be 5,700, Grays Beach movie night would be 5,000, engineering at Mullikens Landing would be 6,200, and just for everybody, because I had to figure this out myself, Mullikens Landing is right over by, after you go onto the state highway bridge, after that's the one right on the right before you go down Jones River towards the Adena. So it's right there, and they're going to be doing some regrouping there and making it so it's more accessible. Then the Memorial Day Parade at $2,750, and then the right to farm signage of $600, and the farm signs look awesome. And so for a total expenditure of $24,750, and just so everybody understands, that's the interest generated off the fund from the Elizabeth Sampson Fund that is expended for municipal education benefits. The Finance Committee votes favorable 600.
Can I just add, because folks have asked this question of us a couple of times, it's definitely the interest. The fund itself, the principal that is preserved on which the interest is-
Correct.
-accumulating, that fund has over $300,000 in it.
It does.
Yes, yes, so I would-
But we don't spend the principal, correct.
Correct. But folks have asked, folks have asked us, as we were going through this article, are we depleting this fund every year? And the answer is no.
No, exactly.
We're using the expendable interest, the non-expendable principal is over $300,000, and that's, you know-
And that's consistent with the terms of Elizabeth Sampson's trust.
Right.
The other thing to remember is that also, if we give money to a, it's like, say, Christmas luminaries, and they only use 2,000, they don't use 2,500, then that 500 comes back in, and that's where you'll see at the top of the article where it says articles monies that were unused from prior article votes. So those are brought in, and Ken Stevens, again, manages all that on what's out, what's in on that balance. Moving on to Article 12, we have the annual article, again, from the Capital Planning Committee, and this is the stabilization fund for capital projects. The 2011 annual town meeting voted meal tax. That meal tax revenue will go into the stabilization fund for capital projects. This year, it's $313,366. Plus additionally, there's $200,000 from the general fund for a total of $513,366. I'm sorry, $513,366. And so all of that will go into the stabilization fund for capital projects. That has Finance Committee favorable 600. Now we move on to Article 13, which is the expenditures from the stabilization fund for capital projects. So we put in $513,366, and this year, the projects they're seeking is $429,63. So this is for multiple items, and that is $50,000 for the purchase of one Ford SUV patrol car for the police department, $35,000 to repair and replace gutters in, is it called FASIA?
FASIA, yeah.
FASIA, for the Adams Center, $25,140 for the purpose of refurbishing a pump engine for the fire department, $132,465 to pay for the second full year of the three-year lease for the two ambulances. I remember when that passed, the fire department. $25,663 to purchase nine portable radios. There's a total of 19 radios being purchased. 10 of them are coming from the Sullivan Toyota, who gave a benefit or a gift to the town, and from the grant. And so where the town is purchasing nine out of the 19. $12,770 to purchase two new video, basically the thing that goes down your throat.
Laryngoscope.
Is that a laryngoscope? I was just, we're not even going to try it. And that's for the fire department for the ambulances. $36,675 to purchase- Thirty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars to purchase one replacement cardboard compactor with two containers, and that's for the dump. Sixty-two thousand dollars to replace the fire alarm system in the KES and KIS school. Forty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to replace the phone system in the Kingston Elementary School as well. And that has favorable action from the finance committee five zero zero. Article fourteen, this is the annual article. This is for equipment purchase that are not in department budgets. So I just want to let everybody know that there's a new motion on this article that's not posted in the warrant. So the issue that the things that the amount of the expenditures is the same. So those amounts are all the same. So we're still expending a hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars. And that is coming from ninety-five thousand three hundred is coming from free cash, thirty thousand for radios to be appropriated from a KEMA grant. So the change was because we're getting the KEMA grant, the motion had to include, and so what was added to the motion language is and that the board of selectmen be allowed to enter into a lease purchase agreement pursuant to general laws, chapter forty-four, section twenty-one C, for public safety radios and purchase to be funded through the KEMA grant. So that we needed to authorize the board of selectmen in order to enter the contract and to accept the grant monies. So this is for materials for the archival center at the Adams Center, a thousand dollars. Event support services for the Adams Center, five thousand. Event liability insurance for the Adams Center of one thousand eight hundred. Surge protectors for facilities of six thousand. The C council on aging grease traps of five thousand. Safety guard railings at the Opochinski Fields, three thousand. Six rain garden maintenance for the fields of six thousand. They'll explain, there's a whole benefit. Mary filled me in on the benefits of these rain gardens that help the fields. It's very interesting. Surveillance cameras at the highway townhouse at the highway department and townhouse of one thousand dollars. Furniture for the library at nine thousand dollars. Painting of the Opochinski Buildings at for facilities at seven thousand five hundred. And then the leased radios from KEMA grant for fire department, that's thirty thousand. That that, as we've indicated, is coming right from the grant. And then for the KIS, KES, one-time equipment purchases of fifty thousand. So that has finance committee favorable action five zero zero. Annual, we have an annual article. Article fifteen is an annual article is to authorize for the total expenditures for the revenue funds revolving, sorry, revolving funds. And so again, this is recreation programs, three hundred and five thousand. Inspeccional services, seventy-five thousand. Senior center programs, fifty thousand. And Adams Center programs is fifty thousand. Again, that is just setting the caps, right? So it can be anything under there and in that. And that's just for them to use their revolving funds. Article sixteen is an annual article for the CPC. I do want to point out to everybody that this year, the the town administrator put them all into one. Moderator is asking that they be broken out to three. And the reason for that is is that typically we always vote the CPC article as separate, I mean, the budget. So the first motion would be for the regular CPC, putting the money into the three buckets that exist under Community Preservation Committee Act. And then the administrative expenses, which is their budget. That's what we usually do as one. And then there were two CPC projects this year. And the first is for twenty-five thousand dollars from the CP Community Preservation Article Act, Community Housing Reserve Fund Balance. And that's for a consultant to update and complete Kingston's affordable housing plan that basically has to be done to be updated. So that's the twenty-five thousand dollars for that. And then the second one is, the second actual project is a hundred and twenty-five thousand with seventy-six thousand seven hundred and six dollars and sixteen cents from the undesignated Community Preservation Fund Balance and forty-eight thousand two ninety-three eighty-four from the CPA Historic Preservation Fund Balance. And this is to purchase the Steven Drew House. It's Circuit nineteen, I almost said nineteen, seventeen sixty, wouldn't be of interest if it was nineteen. Circuit seventeen sixty, this is at Fifty-One Landing Road. And it's being done by the Jones River Landing Environmental Heritage Center, better known, you know, to everybody as the J R L E H C. And this is for the study of marine environmental and related ecosystems. So that's for the second project under the CPC. Finance committee, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Finance committee has a five zero zero favorable as to the CPA bucket budget, the buckets and the budget. Finance committee has a zero five zero unfavorable for the affordable housing plan. And then finance committee has a zero five zero unfavorable as to the purchase of the Drew House.
Right. Quick question. I just want to clarify, you are going to take individual votes on the two projects, correct?
Correct. There'll be three votes under this article.
Okay.
Yeah, so there'll be a vote under the budget, there'll be a vote under the first project of twenty-five thousand and then a vote for the project of one twenty-five.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Yep. Did you want me to?
Yeah, if you can hit that briefly.
So the first, so the budget is the budget. Finance committee is unfavorable for establishing that. The twenty-five thousand for the affordable housing plan, there was some conversation, there was lots of conversation about lots of these articles. And at the end of the day, knowing that we had a new town planner and stepping into a role that he is needs to sort of get his arms around, we were concerned that this may actually not be available or able to be completed in the timeframe. And we wanted to get him to weigh in on whether this is actually going to be doable. The other thing is that the affordable housing plan, when we talked about it, we tried to understand why we needed it. We were being told that we needed to update it, but it was not a real strong response on why. And, you know, we've spent, we spend an awful lot of money doing studies and plans. And, you know, we now, the finance committee questions, do we actually really need this plan? Please explain to us emphatically what it what it's needed for. And we weren't getting that kind of information back. So so that one was unfavorable. The hundred and twenty-five thousand for the Drew House, I'm interested to hear the conversation on town meeting floor. But from the information that that was given to us that we had reviewed, this is a, it's a private purchase. So it's a home that's currently in foreclosure process. It's and and there is another interested party interested in purchasing the home. The Jones River, the, what is it, the J R L E C?
J R L H, yeah, L E H C.
Oh, there it is, J R L E H C. They are interested in in pursuing the purchase of this property in in order to offer like a residence and additional shipbuilding, museum and curator style services. But it will be privately owned. And so our concern is using public tax dollars for the benefit of a privately owned facility. And we were also told that the J R L E H C is going to move forward with this purchase regardless of whether this article passes or not. And so for for those reasons and a couple of more, the finance committee was unfavorable.
So we'll hear some debate on that on article sixteen. Article seventeen is the annual article to establish the, no, I'm sorry, it's not an annual article, it's a new article, to establish a fund to seek to authorize the school district to create a K Kingston Elementary and Kingston Intermediate Special Education Reserve Fund. The intent is to fund, the intent of this fund is to try to take basically the bite out of any year where special ed increases more than normal. And that's pretty much been every year for most years. Town meeting vote will fund the, can't seem to speak. Town meeting vote will put money into the fund and then school committee and board of selectmen majority votes will take money out of the fund. So that's where we're at with that. Finance committee zero five zero unfavorable. Again, Mary, quickly in regard to that one.
So the school, the finance committee felt as though we work very, very closely with the school committee and really try to understand the extent of these expenses. Having, you know, an additional two hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside doesn't necessarily give us the ability to work with them as closely to understand and try to manage the expenses to the best of our ability as a community. A special reserve fund for education has limitations under the law. It's limited to two percent of their operating budget. So in this particular case, it would be about, you know, somewhere in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. And that's not anything to sneeze at. But we felt as though we would like to continue working very closely with the school committee in understanding and supporting their budget and and working together to manage the costs of special ed.
Okay, great, thank you. Article eighteen is the Civil Act has a fund like our free cash for capital projects. Historically, they've used the fund to pay for repairs at the school. This year, they're seeking to vote to remove fifty thousand dollars from the fund to remove lights and poles on the Cyrco Field and to replace a flow box at the school's wastewater treatment plant. So finance committee has done favorable action on the favorable action four zero zero. Article nineteen is a petitioner article by a resident to request to accept Fairway Drive as a town street. It's currently owned by a homeowners association. And that one, the planning board has voted unfavorable action. And the selectmen voted to lay out the road at its meeting on April third, two thousand and eighteen. So I don't have any additional information on that. So we'll hear from that on the floor. Article twenty is a change of a general bylaw. It's seeking to delete the limit of a twelve-month period before the collector can advise all departments of a delinquent tax situation that then permits departments to deny permit issuings and other things on any property owner in that's in delinquency. That has finance committee favorable four zero zero. Article twenty-one is our OPEB article, and that was created by annual town meeting in two thousand and ten. It's to satisfy the requirement set by the government that we need to fund post-retirement benefits for employers, I mean, employees. And we're seeking to put a hundred thousand deposited into that fund this year. And I believe you said that would bring us to three fifty?
This would be our fourth contribution to the fund, bringing the contributions to three hundred and fifty thousand.
And that's still extremely unfunded.
It's a forty million dollar unfunded liability.
So I guess it's the little chunks, the little bites at the, that has finance committee five zero zero favorable action.
The thing about this one is that it's it's really important as we think about going out to borrow in the future. The credit rating agencies really look to communities to make sure that they've got a plan and a commitment to addressing not only OPEB but also continuing with their stabilization fund. So you're seeing articles in here to continue to further that.
That's good information, thank you. Article twenty-two is an annual article. It's to put money into our stabilization fund, which is basically the town savings account. And this year, we're looking to put a hundred thousand into it. And that has finance committee favorable five zero zero. Article twenty-three is our annual article for chapter ninety monies and for our roadways. And this is money that comes in from the state and we're authorizing that that money can be used for the roadways. That has finance committee six zero zero favorable action. Article twenty-four, I'm going to tell everybody, they have to go online, they have to read this fully. It's extensive and it is our marijuana article again. So I just want to say in a basic summary, and I'm telling you, this is a very basic summary, it is prohibiting the sale cultivation in your manufacturing of recreational marijuana in Kingston. So you need to read it to understand what are those limitations. It's not limiting the use of recreational when you have your your permit and your certificate to be able to use it. It's prohibiting the sales cultivation and manufacturing. So planning board will address this at the, this article at annual town meeting. And I'm sure will give us more additional information on that. Article twenty-five is to amend the zoning bylaw. And it's to extend the smart growth zoning to include the T parking lot. And this is going to allow for a portion of the parking lot to build a mixed-use retail housing by right versus the extensive permitting process. And this has finance committee favorable action six zero zero. And I'm assuming because this would generate income.
We're looking for opportunities to increase our economic development and generate some income.
Article twenty-six is the firefighters' union contract, that there'll be no motion on that. Article twenty-seven is the police patrolman's union contract, and there'll be no motion on that article. Article twenty-eight is seeking seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase the Virginia Davis property. Now, I just want everybody to understand, the Virginia Davis property is under chapter sixty-one A regulations and what that does or statute. And what that does is it grants the town a right of first refusal that when the person wants to sell, the town has the right of first refusal to purchase. There's a developer involved that was under purchase and sales agreement with Ms. Davis. And the developer's intent is to put sixty-four units under forty B affordable housing. So the town's seeking to now step in and take the, or not take it, buy the property, right of first refusal, and seeks to acquire for potentially multiple uses. And I think that will come up, whether it be open space. I know sewer committee commission is or committee commission is looking for leaching fields to go on there. So all of that will be discussed. There's a board of selectmen public hearing on May first. So May first, two thousand and eighteen, here in this building at town hall. I know town council advised me that if we were going to proceed with the sale, there would be conditions with a satisfactory purchase and sale title review. There'd be all of those that would be put into place. So finance committee has unfavorable action one four zero. And capital planning will hear at town meeting what their position is about that. So, Mary?
In terms of our vote. So we discussed a number of things. We had several meetings about this. We had the buyers and the sellers in attendance and speaking with their attorneys. At the end of the day, there were a couple of concerns of the finance committee. The first is that right now, there's no clear access or guaranteed access to the property in order to use it for the purposes that were being discussed. The other thing is that the property, based on the plan submitted to Natural Heritage State Agency, it's going to require that sixty percent of the land be undeveloped anyway and remain as forestry land. So only forty percent of it is is developable. Sixty percent will remain open space. So part of the conversation was why would we buy a piece of property for open space when it's going to be required to be open space anyway, regardless of who owns it? There were some folks who felt as though that the town should not be continually buying up property and that there, and then the other overriding factor is that the purpose, the primary purpose that was conveyed to the finance committee was the need for building a future leaching field for the sewer department. And there were concerns about how imminent that need is. The current leaching field is about fifteen to seventeen years old. Leaching fields can can last upwards of forty years. So there doesn't appear to be an imminent concern. The leaching field that's currently being used underneath the Indian Pond Driving Range is developed for three hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons, which is what we're permitted for. There already exists a backup leaching field under the transfer station. So for us, this was a potential backup to a backup. And is it a good and responsible use of funds at this time? And lastly, if if the field, if the land is being purchased for with the intent of future development for leaching fields with for the sewer department, we have to remind ourselves that the sewer department is an enterprise operation. Therefore, all of the costs associated with operating that really are, under mouse general law, should be borne by the actual enterprise operation.
Okay. So on that one, in regard to it, I think I already gave, yeah, the finance committee's view on that. So we'll have, I'm sure we're going to have debate on the floor regarding that one. But the public meeting is May first. Article twenty-nine seeks acceptance of the Gallon Road as a public way. This is a road down by the train station and the planning board will move this motion. Article thirty seeks acceptance of Marion Road as a public way. Again, that's down by the train station and the planning board will be moving that motion. Article thirty-one is to amend the zoning bylaw and it's to delete the old language and put add new language under hotel motel section that would transfer the control of hotel motel permitting process from the ZBA to the planning board. So that's changing it from the ZBA to the planning board. And that will also be moved by the planning board. And that has six zero zero favorable from the finance committee. The article thirty-two seeks the adoption of chapter ninety fundamental speed law. This allows the town to set a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit on town roads versus going through the state with the process through the high mass highway with traffic studies and other cumbersome process. And as you reminded me when we started, that this is under the November two thousand and sixteen Municipal Modernization Act, where they put it through in order to try to make things smoother and easier for the town to deal with the state. And this is one of them, that towns can control and regulate their own roadways in regard to twenty-five mile an hour zones. The article thirty-three is replacing streetlights to LED. That was being moved by Green Energy Committee. There'll be no motion for it. I think they got some new numbers and they want to relook at that situation. Article thirty-four is to amend the general bylaws. And last year, we voted to prohibit full-time or benefit eligible employees to be paid from revolving funds. This year, we're seeking to delete that provision and add a provision that says, if you're going to have a full-time employee and with fringe benefits, then the full-time employee's salary and fringe benefits shall be paid from the revolving fund. So that's to make it so that nothing will come in where somebody's hired, this is for recreation department, somebody's hired, next thing you know, the town is picking up the fringe benefits. So we had debate on this last year, if you all remember. And it will allow them, though, to still hire people, but to pay them all under the revolving fund, which is funded by people paying for.
Programs.
Programs, thank you. I couldn't, I couldn't come up with that word, for for programs. That has finance committee zero five zero unfavorable. And that's about the revolving fund issue and hiring people, right?
Well, and one of our bigger concerns is it doesn't address the OPEB liability issue. So all it does is addresses active employees who would be getting paid current wages. It doesn't do anything to address the future OPEB liabilities.
Retirement and all of that.
Health, specifically medical insurance.
Okay, medical insurance. Article thirty-five is to amend the general bylaw by adding an additional fund. It is the, being moved by the planning board. And the intent is for the planning board to build more sidewalks. That's the intent that the planning board has. They would have developers pay addition. Um, they would have developers pay additional fees, not their regular fees. I did check this out, um, because I was wondering if they were taking fees from general fund to do this, but it's not. The developers would pay additional fees, um, to fund this, um, program, and then that way, um, the Planning Board would be able to, um, construct sidewalks. And the, um, Planning Board is, um, permitted to do this under Mass General Laws if it has a public benefit. And they're saying the public benefit is for, um, citizens of Kingston to have sidewalks. So, uh, Mr. Bouchard, Tommy Bouchard, will explain that to us on the town meeting floor, and Finance Committee did favorable action, five zero one. Article thirty-six is the Water Pollution Abatement Fund, and this is to finance the septic loans for Kingston homeowners. If you remember, the, we have a loan program where if your septic system fails, if a town, a homeowner's septic system fails, then you can borrow money to repair that septic system at a low interest rate. And it's for homeowners in Kingston, and the fund is close to being depleted, it's been used well, um, and so this is to replenish that fund. So I know Finance Committee took no motion, and that you're suggesting we wait this for fall town meeting for a cleaner article. I've had conversations with Town Council, so we might see a change in some motions. Um, and this has to do with, um, Bond Council's thoughts about cleaning this up before we put it forward. So, and Town Council's the same way. Everybody's on board with, it either goes through with Bond, uh, Bond Council's approval or it doesn't, because Bond Council is the one that keeps us, yeah, pretty important. Article thirty-seven is a petition article to seek acceptance of Village Path and Three Rivers Drive as town ways. This is part of Tall Timbers. I do wanna point people out that the petitioner has not submitted this, the required plans with the petition. And in accordance with, um, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, Section ten, the article, um, has to, the article is certified as a petition, but not currently in proper form is the point, um, that is acted on. So if it's, um, moved, um, and it's at its current state, I would have to rule it illegal, and it won't go forward. Article thirty-eight is gonna be somewhat the same, but it's a petition article. It's seeking acceptance of Fountain Knoll Lane in Bogview Road, Smithfull Way and Crimson Harvest Drive as town ways. Again, these are all part of Tall Timbers, and it's the exact same that there's been, uh, the Selectmen did not formally lay out the roadways, um, therefore it's not necessarily properly before town meeting. Um, and if it does go forward without it being properly laid out, formally laid out by the Board of Selectmen, then it, uh, the moderator will rule it illegal, and it won't go forward. Article thirty-nine is the Police Sargent's Union Contract, and there'll be no motion under that article. Article forty seeks fifty thousand from Free Cash to secure the design services for modifications to the Kingston Public Library. And this is a Finance Committee five zero zero favorable action. The Article forty-one is to establish the reserve fund. Again, this is now somewhat, but a different payout vacation and sick leave that's accrued by employees. If you remember, we grandfathered some, employees were grandfathered that if they had the right before, they can keep the right, but new employees don't have this right, but you can, um, accrue the sick leave and vacation time. So then when they retire, all that money needs to be paid out. So this is looking to, um, establish that reserve fund and also fund it with ten thousand dollars this year. So, um, and that has a Finance Committee six zero zero. And Mary, if you wanna address what you're thinking about, what the Finance Committee's plan is for this.
Yeah, you know, we, we, um, quite frequently, uh, have situations where people separate their employment from the town of Kingston, but, uh, according to their employment terms with us, they have accrued and unused sick and vacation time for which they would be paid out at a percentage of, of their, their regular rate. Um, we have to find funding for that when these situations arise. This would establish a reserve fund. Our goal is to start funding it with ten thousand dollars, uh, each year for several years, uh, with an upper limit of fifty thousand dollars, so that we would have that funding available in the event that these separations happen, and we need to, um, pay those employees for their accrued and unused benefits.
'Cause right now, when it happens, it's pretty much coming from free cash.
It's coming from free cash, and, and they can be anywhere from twenty, thirty thousand dollars for these accruals, so we need to make sure that we have funds on hand.
But just to remind everybody now, with new employees, they're not allowed to accrue, and that was done as a, as a mechanism to...
Well, they're, they've been capped.
Capped.
But, but they're still, they're still accruals.
Yeah, there's accrual, but it's a, not the same as, as it was with unlimited accrual to some degree. Article forty-two is to seek tax increment, uh, I'm sorry, to, seek, Article forty-two seeks a tax increment financing agreement, which is a TIF, for, and for the Independence Mall to put in a hotel. And that has Finance Committee six zero zero favorable, and I'm not even gonna try to explain it, I'm gonna go right to Mary on explaining a TIF.
Real quickly, this is, is, uh, it's an incentive program for developers. Uh, in this particular case, uh, the project would be, uh, the hotel, a hotel at the Kingston Collection. Um, in order to incentivize economic development, there are programs available, like a TIF program, that the town can negotiate with the developer to defer taxes. So when you think about a developer, um, spending a couple of years and, and hundreds of millions of dollars developing something in town, they're also, um, bearing a responsibility to pay their property taxes. Incentives like this would defer the payment of those property taxes so that the developer could use their available resources to complete the project. Once the project is completed and it's generating revenue for the developer, then their taxes would kick in. So it's a, it's an economic development tool to incentivize developers to do business here in the town of Kingston.
Okay, and again, under the Finance Committee's nature on that is, um, that obviously economic development being important to both Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, who have made that, um, a priority. Article forty-three is a non-binding referendum, just for everybody to understand. It's the, uh, before the school, which is the Kingston, um, Elementary School, before the Kingston Elementary School seeks a grant, um, to repair the roof, they seek town approval in support of their application, as well as authorization to the Board of Selectmen and the school committee to accept the grant and expend the grant to pay for the repairs of the Kingston roof, Kingston Elementary School roof. So it's a, a refer, uh, it's a, considered a non-binding referendum, and it's just done so that they can do, and then they can apply, and they can say they have town approval and town, um, authorization to expend the funds, and we can move from that, so it's very important.
But there would be a future article, um, once we understand the cost, because we'd have to then go out to borrow. So there would be a future article at a future town meeting, once all of that happens. This is just to start the process.
And to get the grant, hopefully to start the process.
To allow them to apply for it.
Article forty-four, our last article, is to seek to purchase the Old Cumberland Farms, which is the one that's down by Rocky Nook, at the end of, um, Rocky Nook.